This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Call to order the local school committee for Southampton. The time is 6:08 on Wednesday, October 9th. Three out of five members present creating a quorum, also joined by the superintendent of schools and our building principal. Approval of the minutes of September 11th, 2024?
A motion that we accept the minutes?
Motion to accept.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Some will. Public comment, any member of the public wishing to speak on any issue that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none. We have no circulation of warrants and I'm not aware of any announcements or correspondence. Move into the principals' report.
Okay. We had a couple new students enroll. Our enrollment is now at 482. Our fall FASBRIDGE testing shows that students in grades two through six are on track. Students in these grade levels scored between 16 and 80% on the reading test. So what we would like to see is students at 60% or above because 60% shows that students are on track for college and career-ready, according to FASBRIDGE. So every grade level except for grade one, which was at 54%, and we would like to see them at 60. So we're doing some internal things with our intervention teachers and our intervention team, picking up new students in order to make sure that they get to that point. In math, grade one and grades three through six scored 80% or better, which is fantastic. I mean, to have 80 as the threshold is unbelievable because it's still, 60 is on track. And so all those kids were at 80. And grade two scored at 58%, and we would like to see them at 60. And we're going to be testing kindergarten students in November. So some school districts across Massachusetts hold kindergarten testing until students have been in school for a while, and we never did that before. So this year, we decided that we're going to do the same as most districts, which is not test the kindergarten students until they've had time to acclimate to kindergarten. So it will be before Thanksgiving, a couple weeks before Thanksgiving. And then based on that testing, we'll pick up any students that might reach a level of needing an intervention in kindergarten. September 12th, we held grade five and six curriculum night. Caregivers were invited to meet their child's teacher and learn about the expectations for classwork and homework. And then on the 19th, we had preschool through grade four for open house, and it was very well-attended. It was a great night. On September 25th, we had half-day for professional development. We introduced all staff to the new IEP and the different expectations and components of the IEP. And grade two went to Kosinski's Farm on September 27th. We conducted a bus evacuation drill on October 4th. It's mandated by law that we have to do that. We conducted another fire drill on October 7th. I think I reported out last month that we had one in the first five days of school. Now we had another one on October 7th, and this is again just a drill, but it would include our afternoon preschool class, which didn't get, preschool didn't have the first one. So Walk to School Day is scheduled for October 9th, which was today. We had a fantastic day. What a great morning it was today to walk to school with everybody. It's a great community event. And our new preschool van arrived last week, and we love it. And there's a picture of our new van. I already updated you about professional development next week in my report last month about what we're doing. So next month, I'll report out on how it went and what we did, which is next week.
This year, I didn't receive a single complaint about Walk to School Day from anybody in Town Hall, so I appreciate the advanced communication.
Lots of communication this year, yep.
Any other comments or questions on the principals' report?
Yeah. Just came up during today. Is Walk to School Day something Norris does independently, or is it part of a larger initiative?
There is international Walk to School Day, and Massachusetts Department of Transportation, DOT communicates it statewide. And many schools in our state sign up for Walk to School Day and across the country. So we are signed up as one of the schools that participates in it.
Is that beneficial when we apply for the safe routes, the safe routes to school?
Yes. They want to see that we are taking advantage of some of the things that they're offering, and this is one of them, to teach kids that walking to school is good for exercise, is, you know, trying to increase signage outside to make sure it's safe for kids to walk to school, to encourage families to walk to school with their children, to decrease the amount of kids that are on buses and missions and things like that.
Good. Anything else? Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. The focus of the superintendent's report this week, or excuse me, this month, is on evaluation generally and specifically on the superintendent's evaluation. One of the things that I'm, my intent to do is to ensure that the strategic plan, the 22 to 27 strategic plan, is not just a file that sits on a table somewhere and collects dust. It's something that drives our thoughts about what school improvement looks like, what district improvement looks like, what department improvement looks like, and pushes down into professional practice and student learning goals of all educators. So I have shared my goals and the thought process behind it, or excuse me, behind them with all the principals. I've had discussions with them about the through line vertically from district, or excuse me, strategic plan to school improvement plans and district improvement plans, and then all the way down to professional practice and student learning goals. My focus specifically is why I shared this. There were needs that had to be addressed from my perspective based on information I received from the surveys I sent to the principals and the surveys I sent to the faculty and staff. And so I wanted them, A, to understand that they had voice, and B, to understand that I was listening, and I am going to continue to listen and ask for input and feedback on the direction that we're taking. So one of the things I heard was around school culture and district culture and the culture of the central office. So that aligns quite specifically with the strategic plan and one of the strategic objectives. I also heard about the need for processes and protocols and an alignment, if you will, and cohesion between and across the districts. And so that would be the second big bucket in which the goals that you're going to see that I have created reside. And again, I think there's value when we recognize what our strategic plan addresses, and then we reflect those things in the goals that we create to drive our instruction or our practice as educators. So I have then, what I really wanted everybody to understand is that the state provides rubrics for all professionally licensed educators in the Commonwealth. And those rubrics are specific to a license. So there's a superintendent's rubric and a business office rubric, educators' rubrics, school support staff rubrics. And I want to make sure that, again, we are recognizing indicators of focus that are relevant and authentic to the work that we're doing. And so if you look at the document that I shared, and I'm not asking you to peruse it right now, but if you look at it, it's kind of progresses from strategic plan to rubric specifically for the superintendent. And then the indicators that I felt, based on the feedback that I've received, A, from the principals, B, from the staff, and C, from the department, excuse me, the chair people in my meetings with them as I was going through the process of being hired, that there needed to be a focus on those specific indicators in order for communication to become more effective, transparency to be an expectation for the processes and the protocols in the various offices to be formalized and expectations to be set around them. So when you look at my planned activities, the elements of focus that, excuse me, the indicators of focus that are reflected in them, I hope that you'll see interconnection and cohesion. And when I start looking at the principals' goals as school improvement and student learning, professional practice, I should see that vertical through line for consistency and for transparency. So that's, I want people to understand where I'm coming from and why the focus is what it is for this first year in my time here in the districts. Oh, I'm sorry. And the last piece is ADC, of course. The All District Committee has in its language a focus on superintendent's evaluation and a process building. So I wanted to come into that meeting on the 24th, I believe, with a solid foundation upon which they can provide me feedback and input, and then they can also gain some feedback from the members of the various committees because they'll have already seen this. And it's, again, my intent to be communicative and transparent in the work and why it's being done.
Okay. Questions, comments? Are we going to, are we going to take up the finance team at Central Office under Budget Other?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, Chair's report. Everything seems to be going smoothly from my point of view. So we have not been to a All District Committee meeting since the summer. So nothing to share there. Hampshire Regional School Committee, I believe, is Margaret. PTO is Kim. Jen, school council?
No.
That's not you?
Margaret.
Mark. What do you have, Dylan?
CES. Next one.
Okay. Then what do you have?
I don't have anything.
You have to have, there's...
No, because Margaret has both. I was going to do council, but she was there last year, and she's like continuing her project that they already started, so.
I can tell you that.
Go ahead.
Email for school council volunteers will go out by the end of the week, and I'll be asking for two parent volunteers and a community member. And our first meeting will happen before our next school committee meeting, so she'll have an update then.
Okay. Collaborative for Educational Services?
I guess I come at the last minute, wasn't able to attend the meeting. I'll give you a chance for that one.
If you want a PTO update.
Sure. What's the PTO got?
PTO met last night in our library. The treasurer's report for September has an ending balance of $33,000. The open house bake sale made $933. That's a lot of cupcakes. The Cherrydale fundraiser raised $4,000 in profit. Teacher grants were passed out for a total of $4,700. They approved some requests that were asked of them. They made a $100 donation to Magic for Matty. We're going to be using Mantis Graphics Store for our school spirit wear. So we'll go back to some things.
Is that in addition to the one that just closed?
Did they have what?
What one just closed?
Yes, Spirit, Norris Spirit Wear just closed.
I didn't know that.
Oh. Okay.
I didn't know that. Chunk or Treat will be held on October 18th. There are 37 cars that have signed up. People who are decorating a car have been asked to supply their own startup candy, and then the PTO will replenish it. We have tons of candy. During the week of November 6, 7, and 8, parent-teacher conferences are happening. There will also be a book fair. Teachers will be given the opportunity to look at the books and create wish lists. Also during that week, we will participate in Spirit Week, and a memo will go home to parents, letting them know which day is what. There's going to be a local photographer doing family photos. There will be a sitting fee of $30, and the PTO will be given $15 for every, it's a fundraiser.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a fundraiser. Holiday Bazaar will be Saturday, November 23rd. The teachers will plan on creating a craft, so they sell that at the craft fair, along with many wonderful vendors. It's a great day. Smentzels will be sold again in the office during the holidays, and the next PTO meeting is November 12th. Thank you to Sunday Burke for doing that update that I just read to you. She's very good about sending that out. It's fantastic.
As far as the select board update goes, we are moving into budget season. We are continuing with developing a five, or a rolling five-year capital program that will include Norris. We are going to allocate funds in the budget for the envelope study that we previously discussed on the walking tour of Norris, where Norris will be, well, Norris is going to be the key stakeholder in that, but we are going to include the other municipal buildings to create the plan, to then apply it to the rolling five-year capital project. And we are working on changing the bylaw that oversees the capital project committee to give it some more, they're going to, ultimately, if everything passes, the committee will have independent authority to request debt obligations for capital projects rolling forward. So more of that as that comes along. And then we are, this will require some lift from the, from your, the building principal or through the superintendent, but we are going to convert, if you're familiar with Hadley and how they do their budget presentation, the 215-page book, we're going to go to similar 100-page book. So every department's going to have their narrative, how many faculty they have, what's different from year over year, justify their budget and explain things in there in a positive way. We're also, the intent of this, after we get the first year done, then the next year, you're just kind of like updating the numbers, maybe change some of the key points. But this is going to be our living document for the following year, each year, as we get more aggressive into grants. You know, the story will kind of already be written there as we go along, when we pick along with that. So there'll be more to come with that. I know Norris will need to come in when we get to the budget season at that piece. Should be thinking about capital request, you know, as normal. And that's all I have from there. The...
I'm sorry, John, may I ask a question?
Yep.
When I think about that document, I think about what Springfield did, and that was kind of a template for what we had done in West Springfield around that document that had some narrative in it to be used, as you described. But there's also, and this is my question, especially with Dawn sitting here, is are there going to be any directives around, you know, level service, level funded, or different levels of funding for the budget projection? Like directions for how we present?
I know, yeah. So normally, the select board's position has generally been, unless we're anticipating a need for an override, we pretty much stay out of it.
Okay.
For the first draft.
Okay.
But it will be expected, I forget what the deadline is, for Norris to come in. And it usually, Southampton will usually, because of the regional has to be done, and there's generally less ability to push back on the regional budget. In the past, Norris has always had to take the hit. So if the regional budget went up by four and we could only afford a three, we were carving 1% out of Norris to start with. I think it's probably been four or five years since we had to do that.
Okay.
And we've taken steps to avoid that. And I like how it went last year, where Norris's budget was actually, for the most part, the draft was out before regionals was. So we could spend more time working on that. And I'm sure with Dawn, it's going to have, the details are going to be there.
Okay.
You know, if you go back two or three years, it's kind of like, here's your front page, and you can't look behind it. So it makes it hard to sell that story. I think we've made a lot of progress on that. I wouldn't envision, you know, I think it's safe to assume a 2.5% increase, and then if there's more, you have to have a story as to why.
Yep. Understood.
Yep. Anything else? Budget Other.
So you have a document in your packet.
So just because folks watching from home.
Right. Okay, hello, I'm Dawn Scaparati. I'm the business administrator for Hampshire Regional School District, and I have been there five weeks now. And I've had an opportunity to look around and identify major activity that needs to take place in order to produce the reports that all the stakeholders need, a budget versus actual report. We can produce reports now, but I think I may have mentioned before, I can't remember last time if we had talked about it, that there are some significant holes in the data. And so I can speak to that. And this document speaks to what those holes are and identifies resources to try to fill in that data.
Okay.
So in terms of critical activity, under this first section, it's, we have to be prepared in November, I think it's the middle to late November that our external auditors are coming. And in order to prepare for that audit, we have to look back a little bit and make sure that balances that need to coordinate are coordinating. And we have started to do that, and of course, they do not. So the ending balances for '22 should be the beginning balances in the general ledger for '23, and that isn't the case, so we're starting to look at why that isn't the case. So we need to get that together because the auditors have an expectation when they come that our trial balances will be in order so that they can then audit them. And when they audit them, they basically do sampling, and they say, okay, we'd like to look at this aspect of your accounts payable. We'd like to look at this payroll from this date. So they just do sampling based on their statistical analysis, and we have to be prepared to give them the details. But you can only get to that once they look at the overall picture. Right now, for example, it shows at the end of '23 that we still had accounts receivable of over $800,000, and that's probably not true. So accounts receivable, basically that somebody owes us money as of the end of the year. And so we have to dig behind that and make sure that those numbers are accurate. And so that, that activity is, has started. And that needs to be finished by the time they come, which is mid-November. So the way this is organized is by year. So that's going to be '22 slash '23. Then we go to '24, and the largest piece of a school's budget is often the salaries. And we have 26 pay periods that would be reflected typically in a full year. And right now, 20 of those 26 pay periods are missing from the general ledger. So people got paid. It's just that when, last year, the payments started to be paid out of our system, which is called Infinite Visions, and July, August, and September operated that way. And then the business administrator at that time decided that he needed to outsource the payroll to Harper's. So I'm not sure if you were familiar with that, but that did get outsourced. And so the good news is people got paid, people got paid accurately. However, that data didn't automatically transfer to our general ledger, where we have to accumulate all of the financial data. So we have to find a way to put it in. And what we're trying to do is avoid the very tedious, cumbersome, time-consuming effort of re-entering 20 payrolls. So every, by person, is how it would have to be done. And so we are in the process, and tomorrow, there's an extensive meeting to find out if we can upload that into our system from the Harper's. So we're trying to come up with an electronic way to do that.
Is that, so that's the backlog? Has a bridge been built now so?
No.
Forward?
No. So not only do we have the 20 pay periods in November, but, I mean, in 2024, but we have to do it for 2025 as well, so that it will be uploaded automatically.
Okay.
And we're continuing to use this Harper for payroll?
Yes. We'll be continuing to use that for the near future, for the indefinite future. So that, that's a primary activity. And then there are some other things related to payroll that you will see in the next. So the one I just talked about is number three, and you'll see some other things in four, five, and six that have to do with payroll. I won't get into those specific weeds unless you want me to.
Why?
Pardon me?
I guess my, one of my follow-up, not necessarily follow-up questions, one of my open-ended questions is, if it hasn't been completed, are we making significant progress on people's retirement contributions?
Yes.
Okay.
I can say with, with some certainty that we are.
Okay.
And retirement contributions are two ways. One is the MTRS, and the other is a 403B. So the 403B would be equivalent to, you know, 401K. And so there are contributions made, not everyone has them, but many teachers do and, or many staff do, and that's being, that's being done, and it's being done at the Harper's level, so they're taking those deductions, and then they are sending the money that would go to the individual fidelity or whatever organization it is, and that's happening.
Okay.
And MTRS did have a backlog.
Yep.
And I think as of today, we're just about, if not completely caught up in Hampshire Regional and Chesfield-Goshen. Southampton is, is, we work with Jen Day, the treasurer collector, and we had a large meeting yesterday with her staff and ours to iron out who does what, and I think we came to a mutual accord as to it's a shared responsibility. The central office team will be a little clearer in the information they provide. For example, there are some things that are non-MTRS salary eligible, and so we will just put non-eligible or non-MTRS, so that it's just easier payroll after payroll for people to see, and we won't get into the trouble that we got into before. So, yes.
And Dawn, if I, if I may, I think it's really important to say, one of the things we're really trying to do is ensure that we're building relationships with the districts. And that could, it's part of the goals, right? But it's also part of what we need to do to move forward in a positive way after what has been. So we're meeting with all the select boards, we're meeting with the treasurer collectors, we're meeting with those people with whom we work and should be working collaboratively, and we're establishing those relationships, building trust. And we just met yesterday, Scott was there and Jen was there, and you know, we're coming together to make sure that we do not repeat what has happened in the past.
Yeah. Because there are some interdependencies.
Yes.
Where the, where the towns, financial staff does something, and we do something, and there's some overlap, and we're trying to get clarity around that. I've just started, I wasn't clear about that to begin with, and I think that a lot, there are a lot of new people, and there are some people who have, who just, they weren't clear to begin with either. So we are clarifying that, and I'm hoping, you know, I'm hoping that that's, I feel confident that that'll work.
Yeah. And again, I'm confident everything's going in the right direction. There's a few things that we can say, okay, all right, I mean, this account is overdrawn, but this one is overstated, and you know, it's going to kind of work itself out, and that's fine. But when you impact people's paychecks.
Oh, I agree.
You know, the other, again, Harper's was supposed to solve this issue, but you have to, you have to load the initial load to start with on vacation time and sick time and guilt time.
Yes.
Right? And, you know, some staff didn't know how to access their pay stubs, you know, it's little things that we're going to do, but...
Right. And that's, that will be...
Showing forward.
Yeah. I think we, I think we are showing forward progress, or that there is forward progress. There will always be, you know, a hiccup here or there, and one of our, one of our staff has implemented with Harper's the automated time and attendance for the districts. And I know some towns are thinking about doing that. Jen said that they've, they've been thinking about possibly doing that as well. They just haven't done that yet. But in implementing it, there are often these little punch lists, because this isn't quite working and that isn't quite working, but we're aware of that and we're working through those things.
Okay.
So then, the other item, number seven, is that at the fiscal year-end, the way accounts payable was handled wasn't handled quite correctly. And so some of the, at the towns, the towns have this down. It comes, you have a cutoff date for purchases, you do encumbrances, you say, this is how much it needs to be charged FY '24. That didn't happen at the district level, and so the 24, some of the 24 invoices were charged against the 25 budget. And so we need to reverse that, and we're working on that. So that's, that's number seven. And then what I would say... And then what I would say for, then another very, very large one in terms of time is number nine and 10. So when you receive money into the district, you turn it over to the treasurer, and the treasurer records it in his cash book, and then what the treasurer's responsibility in the district is, it's different than in the towns, he just takes that money that he has recorded into his little spreadsheet, which they call a cash book, and reconciles that to the bank account. So he knows what's in the bank, he knows what he's deposited, that all lines up. Once again, we have to get that same information into the general ledger, and that information last year wasn't input into the general ledger. So we're going back and inputting all of that information into the general ledger. That's what number eight, what number nine is. Anything we've received, we are ensuring is recorded. And then what we need to do is, leads us to number 10, which is reconcile what is in our district treasurer's cash book to the general ledger. So, and then, once the audit is complete, and we've got all of the information into the 24 general ledger, then we'll roll those balances over, and then we'll prepare for the audit. That I don't have written down, but I'll add that. This is a living document, and as we identify things, I'll be adding to it. So that's what's happening, that's what needs to happen for 24, and for 25, it is some similar, some similar things. One of the things that we need to do, the budgets were loaded at a macro level, so like all teacher salaries was in, is a particular line, and a number of teachers or principals have asked, could you please put them in first grade, second grade, third grade, how, you know, break them down for the high school, it would be in by department, math, history, et cetera, which is how they will manage their budget. So we're in the process of trying to create that at that level, which will help the principals look at their budget and manage that. So I guess I would just suffice it to say, rather than droning on, what I just said about 24, the same thing has to happen for 25. A very large project is the grant reconciliations. We have somebody that Vito has brought on, brought on board to help us with some of that forensic work. He's looking back to 2019, and we are looking at what the balances are, because not all of the balances are recorded or straightened out. So there's a lot of forensic and look back, but we are, we've identified that, and we have identified resources to try to help us with that.
And if I could piggyback, I think, you know, Dawn, she's been very humble throughout this, but she's done a great job in the week she's been here to identify these items, and that list unfortunately has grown. But we've assigned resources to address it, and the next step, as we work with the state, because we have met with Jay Sullivan and his team twice now, we have monthly meetings moving forward, is to develop a timeline and kind of a triage method for those items, so that we can, again, fix them and start checking them off the list, have created protocols so that we never go back there again, and we're able to move forward in a positive way. So that's really, this is, and we are sharing this with each select board and each treasurer, and we are being 100% transparent, so people understand where we are, the realities of what we need to do specifically, and then the triage of how we're going to get it done.
And do you still feel that, based on everything you know right now, you have adequate resources?
I would say, we have adequate resources based on the work that was done by you in the last budget cycle to assign a pot of money, to find resources. So Carrie Sheehan we brought on board, we have the accountant that's been working, she's our longest-tenured employee, right, that's a contractor from February. We brought another accountant that is part-time to work on things. So yes, however, the next phase, as you said, is 26 budget. We have to look at a real confident assessment of staffing and what that looks like moving forward.
And the auditors have given us an initial, their initial opinion on staffing levels, and so we have not made any decisions about that, they haven't come here to talk with us yet, but we are, that's something that we're evaluating.
And that was, again, one of the things that we are trying not to do is make assumptions. I feel like assumptions had been made in the past, and that has gotten us into trouble. I refuse to make any assumptions. I am not going to assume that you, as the chair of the Southampton Committee, saw the treasurer's reports, so I shared them with you for the last five years. I did the same with all the other chairs. I want to make sure everybody has the information they need, so that they can support and give us feedback and input on the work we're doing and the direction we're going.
Okay.
Then I think the other thing that's important is the required state and federal reporting. We talked about MTRS reporting, and we're moving forward nicely on that backlog. The other thing is, there are end-of-year reports. I don't know if the school committee ever sees those reports, but there are end-of-year reports that are required for each of the five schools, and they're due by September 30th. They're all about the financials, they have to be put in a certain way, and then the state uses them to analyze the expenses of the schools. There's no way we can do the September, meet that deadline, that deadline's passed, but we did meet with Desi and got an extension. So our extension is till February 1. If we can get it done beforehand, we will, because they would love to see it by the end of the year, we would love to have it done by the end of the year. In order to do that report, which probably, just putting the numbers in itself, will take three weeks anyway, or longer, but we don't have the information in our system yet to be able to extract. So that information has to get in the system, and then we can do the reporting. The one that, the one that I know everybody is familiar with is E&amp;D. That E&amp;D certification is also dependent on all of that information being put into the system, and we need to see where that, you know, where that ends up. We can't do it until the, until that information is in.
So both end-of-year and both end-E&amp;D certification extensions are out till February 1st?
No. The end-of-the-year report is February 1, and I'm not certain what the situation is with E&amp;D. We spoke to Desi about it, and they said, we understand, we think it's going to go February 1, but we're going, you need to talk to DOR. Is that your understanding, Vito?
Exactly correct.
Yeah, so we have to talk to the DOR, and I have calls into them, and I'm waiting to hear back from them. Initially, when I contacted them, because I contacted them right away when I could see that the information wasn't in there, the person I spoke with said, oh, well, that's, you need to talk to Desi about that. So when I spoke to Jay Sullivan, he said, okay, actually, you got to go talk to DOR. So I'll get to the bottom of it, but that's, that's a really important one. So even if we don't have certification in the timeframe that we would like, we're going to have to work parallel paths with the budget, and we're going to have to move forward with the budget side, and then drop in the E&amp;D as it's available. So I'm hoping and planning that it's not going to hold up our budget cycle, we will continue with it, but it's, it will pop in at the end.
Well, transparency.
Right. Is one of the, is the end-of-year report the one that determine, has the bussing information and the reimbursement calculation? Or is that a separate report?
I think it is that one. I'm not positive. I'll check, I'll check on that. I think it is.
I would assume transportation is.
Yeah, it is. It's different schedules, it's, and you put in different information, and it also includes the transportation. Oh, now, speaking of transportation, if the end-of-year report isn't in by a certain date, what they will do is, they will, let's say you do a million dollars in transportation reimbursement, that you'll still get your full million, but instead of getting it in January and May, you'll get it all in May. It's a slap on the wrist, and we're going to have to take that, I guess.
We got some slaps coming.
I know.
What I would say, as far as cash flow goes, I think it's been that way for the past couple of years.
Yeah, I know. So then the next thing is just about budget development, and we can talk further about that, but the, this is kind of boring maybe, but the exciting thing is, we have a assistant business administrator, and he's starting November 1. So that's, that's a real positive. I'm trying to cast this in a positive light, we know what's wrong, and now we just have to fix it. Fixing it is a huge endeavor, and we're just going to go about it one step at a time. And then, of course, there's the longer process improvements, trying to document things and get standard operating procedures in place, and the one thing that I've seen that's, that's a little scary is that there's so many single points of failure. If the payroll person is out for a week, payroll doesn't get run, there's no cross-training. The same with accounts payable. Our accounts payable person, while she is accrues vacation, she doesn't take it except for one day a week during the summer, because she can't be gone for a week. That's unacceptable, and we're going to have to do something about that.
And just, I don't want to make an assumption here, but under the 26 budget development, there's going to be a, will there be a concentrated effort to include building principles?
Oh, absolutely.
So that principals know their budgets?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
One of the, one of the key things, John, that was my experience in the budget process when I was assistant and when I was interim, was a transparency and a process that was shared. So the first thing that's going to happen is, here's our process, here's our timeline, here are the stakeholders who are going to have feedback and input, and these are the deliverables.
Okay.
And then the last page of this report just shows what our current staffing levels are, under this finance business office team staff, and then the additional support that we have throughout what I'm calling the forensic period.
Yep.
So if you have any questions now, or if you think of them later, feel free to contact me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Go ahead. I just have one quick question. On your staffing.
Yes.
The, not to mention anybody by name who's not here, but the employee that's listed as a .6, are they a .4 somewhere else in the district?
No, no, that's, that's an excellent question, John. The employee, so we had a payroll person, and that person left, that's a full-time 1FTE.
Yep.
This particular person has been, this person who's listed there has been cross-training and overseeing payroll for a long time, and we wanted her to be there because, as you had mentioned, payroll is so critical, we can't afford to have somebody new coming in and learning that. However, she is a young mother and doesn't want to work full-time.
Gotcha.
So what we said is, you can work .6, and we will find a .4, because the function itself requires a 1.0 FTE. So we are on the hunt for that, and have had several applicants come through already. So we're on the hunt, and so we'll have the .4 to complete that.
You're budgeted for 5.0 right now, you're running at 4.6.
That's correct.
Deliberate.
With that, but then we've got all of these others.
Right, that's the temporary that may run two or three years.
Yes, exactly, exactly. And the Kyle Landrio in there, the assistant business administrator, it's, he's just in italics because he hasn't started, but he's planned to start. And, and one of the things I want to say about that, in addition to what I was saying about the cross-training, for several years, I don't need to tell you this, but for several years, as you know, the business, there's been a lot of turnover in the business administrator, for the business administrator, and it's very hard to find them now, not only for us, but for so many schools. It's a very difficult position to fill. And so one of the things that I had spoken to Vito about is, the next person we hire, we should try to work with them so that they could take over as business administrator if the business administrator left. I'm not planning on leaving, but the reality is, who knows? There needs to be somebody there trained, so in the event that somebody leaves, they can step in. And so we have found someone who is, who has been a teacher for 18 years, a math teacher, who has experience in extracurricular things that's finance-oriented, and he would like to switch his, to an administrative role, and is, has agreed to get his license, so that he could be prepared to take over. So that's, that's, I think, something of note.
Okay.
Okay? Oh, no, Dylan, you had a question?
Yeah, I think last time you were here, we talked about fiscal year '23 still not being closed out.
Yes.
Is that still the case?
Yes. And that's, but it has to be closed for the auditors to come. So, so the auditors will come, and they'll say, oh, and they'll look at things, and they may give us, they will give us entries so that we can close those books, and then we can roll those balances over into '24. So we're not, yeah, yeah.
What's the timeframe on that looking like?
Well, they're going to be here between mid-November to late-November into January.
So the auditors are expected to fill in the gaps in the general ledger and the...
Well, maybe, they wouldn't see it that way, but I'm saying, they will look, they will look over our financial statements that we will produce based on our review, and then if they think there's gaps, they'll give us some suggestions for changes.
And that's what I was talking about, I was making reference to the audit reports, and in the audit reports, there are recommendations for specific actions and other things. So to your, to your point though, Dylan, '23 is already late, but the discussion we had in July with them was that they would be here in mid-November to audit '23, and then they'd come back in the spring for '24.
And then it would get us on, on a regular track.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, because so my understanding is, we really can't close out '24 until '23's fully figured out, because you have the rollover.
That's correct.
We can't get actuals on '25 until we know what '24 is closed, because we had to roll those balances over, which also makes '26 challenging to plan, because we're not sure what our actuals are for '25 until we get, I mean, am I...
I'm afraid you understand it well, yes. And, but it's not as bad as it sounds in that the expenses are independent. You know, the balances, like grant balances and cash balances and different things that require a rollover, yes, that's true, but the expenses themselves just are pretty much year-to-year, and so I think we can make, we can still make progress on the budget. We will still make progress on '25, once those other things get into the general ledger, we'll still be able to make progress and provide information in terms of where we are with the budget to actual, but until those numbers get in there, we, it's, it's just so hard, because principals want that. They want to know where they are, they've already been operating for a couple of months. So we are going to work hard to get it done as soon as possible.
Yeah, and I think from the committee's point of view, we've been operating under the interpretation of past individuals, that if anything, we're going to get more money, meaning, meaning we haven't drawn down the grants, we haven't pulled in that cash, but we've paid the bill.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And the fact that, you know, they're always quick to say there's still cash in the bank.
Yeah. I couldn't verify that right now.
But I know. So I guess what I would want to know is, and if it ever comes up, where it suddenly becomes clear that there is a shortfall, that, you know, we would know about that.
Absolutely know, and that's, that I can assure you, because we are going to be transparent with everything, the good and the bad.
And the ugly, we will, all three.
Yeah. You know, there was an email that came about the ESSR funds.
Yes.
And we hadn't spent it all. I mean, our, as far as Norris goes, the town records show we spent every penny of it.
Yeah.
But there was like, I don't know, 200, I mean, it was a small number, but I was concerned to see all the other large numbers, when that's come and gone.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yep.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, can I ask a couple of questions? Seeing as I'm new to the whole budget thing. If you waved a magic wand today, and all of the problems are solved, and you were starting from square one and everything was fine, do you think you have enough people working to continue on?
No.
How this works?
No.
Like having to manually put things from one to another?
I don't think so at this point, but I told Vito I felt I needed to withhold judgment, because I need to really, I need to see what a normal situation is like, but because of, because of the cross-training, everybody's job takes the, all of the time, so they don't have time to cross-train. So I don't think so. The other thing I told Vito was, I'm sorry to say it so definitively, but I said.
Record.
And on record?
Go ahead.
I did say, I wouldn't join, I wouldn't sign the contract, and I wouldn't stay without an accountant. The reason we're in this mess is because, unlike the towns, the schools do not have an accountant. And all of these entries have been messed up, because there isn't somebody, there isn't a trained accountant, who knows?
Debits and credits.
The debits and credits. This kind of an account takes a debit balance, this kind of account takes a credit balance, and things have been put in backwards, and it's just, I think that the business administrator in the long past maybe had, was an accountant, but they're very hard to come by, as evidenced by the DOR themselves, who can't find enough accountants, and has partnered with, I think, I can't remember if it's, it's a community colleges, to create a municipal accounting curriculum, so that there'll be more people trained who can then come into municipalities. Municipal accounting is very different than corporate accounting, so in... Municipal accounting is very different than corporate accounting, so in private accounting, so we need an accountant. The auditors have indicated that as well. And so I feel it's like, this is coming attractions. It's a little too early to say definitively yes or no, but I would say if you asked me and I had to go on record, I would say no. There needs to be some cross-training and there needs to be an accounting person.
But if that magic wand got waved, I would suggest this, that our administrative assistant staff would be cross-trained. We would ensure that there's a patch that does the export-import or, yeah, export-import between those systems that we need done and that we would then be able to develop a story and the rationale to, to support a, a business office staff that includes an accountant in some capacity.
Yeah. And Harper's has the ability to bridge with what's called, you're, use the word "patch."
Yes, a bridge.
Well, it's going to be my other question is, is there a definite way that the payroll company we're using can get the information from one to where we need it to be so there's not this continuous need to manually...
Yes, there is, and we're, we're doing parallel paths. We believe that there is. We have to talk with them, we have to talk with our infant vision system and Harper's so that they, so Harper's, Harper's knows what, what format they need to put things in. We believe that that's going to happen. If it doesn't, we still have to get this in.
Right.
So besides manual entry, we have, Vito has identified someone who, J., whom J. Sullivan knows well and respects highly, who could come in and do that, an IT person. That wouldn't be our first choice at this point because we have a system and Harper's should, must do this regularly. It's just we had to get connected with, with the person who does that implementation.
Identify the accounts that you want to have hit.
Exactly.
And, you know, it's a, they basically build it.
Yes.
To your...
Based on our specifications. So we're developing those specs and working with both organizations to do that. So I do think that bridge will happen.
Okay.
And hopefully sooner than later. I just don't know how long it's going to take to do that.
Jen, if you can bust out the wand, I'm all in.
Yeah.
I really wish I could.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I know last time we talked through, again, I understand it's been five weeks, I'm not expecting miracles here, but I would love to see projected timelines for these things to happen, of dates. That way, I'm not trying to hold people's feet to the fire, but I feel like if, you know, with the number of issues we've kind of...
Covered.
Covered. I understand everything's pressed. I understand everything is, you know, important, right? I mean, there's not, you can't make a list of this is the most important thing and then down, this is the least important thing, right? Because keeping the, keeping the ship afloat is important as well as fixing all the past problems.
I know.
So I think a timeframe or timeline would at least allow us to create some sort of priorities on that. And that way, if you also come to it and say we're not going to be able to meet these, here's a specific request, we need to be able to make this goal happen by this date.
Mm-hmm.
I'm hoping we can event, we can try to find resources and figure out a way to make that happen. Because right, I mean, the way I read all this and I, you know, I've been following this for years now, is you say, well, I got to fix this, well, but then we got to fix that. But first we have to fix this and it becomes almost overwhelming, but the amount of stuff that needs to happen simultaneously.
Mm-hmm.
So I think if we can break it down, get timelines, expected completion dates, and then if it's not going to hit those, figure out why we're not going to hit those and what can we do to make sure that we do.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I'd just say along, along those lines, whatever document that is, from the town's point of view, the distribution list, right, would be the town administrator, the chair of finance, the chair of the select board.
Yep.
You know, so again, because those are the two big outsiders within our group that if, if, at least if they're seeing this on a monthly or quarterly basis, I don't think it needs to be weekly, but you know, here's the update, here's what we, this is what we discovered. They see it and it doesn't all come out at budget time.
Yes.
And then they're sitting there like, what do you mean?
Yeah.
I thought this was all set.
Right.
Okay.
And that, to your point, and that's what I meant when I was referring to that before, the triage.
Yep.
And J. Sullivan said the exact same thing, Dylan, that you said. As you work forward, please develop a timeline and attach it to these items.
Yeah.
And we, what's the bleeder? We get that first. What's the parallel track? What's the timeline? What are the resources we need to bring to bear? Do we need anything else? So to your point, you're right on target.
And I will produce that timeline, I think, by...
Don't even give it, you're working on the timeline.
Soon. As soon as possible.
I'm not looking for data.
No, as soon as possible.
I would like to see that just...
And, and...
This allows us to direct resources to you.
No, I agree. I appreciate that. So I, I will get that and then it'll be my best estimate at this point and then, and then we can talk about it as we go forward.
Perfect. Great work, Dylan.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hope to see you at your 90-day evaluation. You're five weeks in, hope to see you at your 90-day evaluation.
She hasn't run for the hills yet.
All right. New business. Any other business that cannot wait until our next regularly scheduled meeting? Nope. Okay. Ongoing business. Title IX policy updates, second read, AC-R, ACA and ACAB.
John, I don't think you were here last time, but I think we just, if you remember correctly, we discussed this, these were developed within central office in consultation with council and with the MASCE guidelines to update these policies to be in conformity with the current laws.
Correct. And I would just restate that a little, a little bit differently. I would say MASCE and our council provided them initially. They were reconciled by district council to develop these which reflect some of the MASCE and our council's determination on what is best suited for the districts. So that's what's in front of you. Then it came to us and we brought it to each of the committees for first and second reads.
So the Southampton School Committee is this body. What is the Southampton School District?
What is the Southampton School District?
What is that?
Is that not a...
Is that not a thing?
Is it intended to be Norris?
So if you go on to, if you do go to DESI, look up, there is no William E. Norris. It is, William E. Norris is under the Southampton School District.
Okay.
Just so you know. So for, as far as you go to, I believe under DESI, we are categorized, when you get for all the data reporting, we are the Southampton School District.
Pre-K through sixth district.
Correct.
Okay. Because my, my understanding of the organization is that there's five districts. That include...
Yeah, I just, I've heard that definition.
But it's actually consistent with how Department of Education labels us.
Yeah. It's always somewhere in there. I mean, yeah, it's fine.
Right, and you would see Southampton Road School, Westfield, and you would see Southampton, which is Norris. We aren't named as a school because we're considered a district.
I don't think Southampton Road School is under, Southampton Road School would be under the Westfield School District.
Correct.
But when you look it up on the accountability reports, your choice, yeah, if that's what you were saying, do you know what I mean?
But, but the, the, again, this was provided by Kimberly. So what I could say is we could quite simply put Norris...
No, I, so I think of Norris not as a district, but as a department of the town that falls under the town.
Understood.
So that, but yet the school committee had independent authority from the, so we, school committee could adopt a policy that is in conflict with town policy and still be okay with it. I may have said that as a question, but that was really a statement.
So I'm going to say, so just, just by example, if we didn't rejoin and we decided to build our own high schools.
Yes.
I didn't say it.
I'm all for it.
And, you know, that would fall within the Southampton School District, which would be consistent with the way these policies are written because...
So I guess how's Hoyokan to DESI site? Is that the City of Hoek School Department?
It's school, Hoyok, just...
The Hoyok District.
I can operate.
I believe it.
Do you want me to look it up?
Yeah, it's Hoyok.
I've never heard that, you know, the district's label, and I just think that it's something, I think that is a legal thing. That's probably... I get what you're saying as far as like that part of it, but I would assume if it came from our council, that...
Well, yeah, but...
That wording would be correct.
But that same council, a previous member of that same council firm said that when we all gathered in Williamsburg in the library one snowy morning and voted to absolve the superintendent's union, we're good. Four years later, I'm told that vote doesn't count. Technically, that union still exists.
Okay.
Lawyers are like consultants.
Hey, easy.
They tell you, they tell you what you pay them to tell you.
Easy.
But that's, it's more of a question. I mean, I'm not opposed to anything that's in here.
Okay.
So what does the committee want to do?
I vote that we adopt policies, AC-R, ACA and ACAB as policies of the Southampton School District. And Southampton School Committee.
And effective as of today's date?
Effective as of October 9th, 2024.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made, second discussion hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Security upgrade updates.
Yeah, so we had the people in again this week. I said last month it was 90% done. Maybe I should have said it was 80 and maybe now we're 90. They did install a new intercom system when you come to the front door. So when you come to the front door and you hit the button, we have a monitor in the office that shows your face.
Yep.
And we can talk to you and the, it's not as, it's, it's more crisp now and you can actually hear what people's...
I was going to say, I heard a new bell today when someone pressed it.
Yeah.
Something like a Ring doorbell?
Yes. Yeah, it's great. And then there's also one in the custodial office so that when a vendor comes or supplier comes, they can see who it is when they ring the bell before they let anybody in, before they open the door, which is great. We're going to get a price to see if I can get one in my office and one in the vice principal's office because many times after school we're there alone or if people are at lunch or whatever, just to have one in my office so I can see who's at the door as well would probably be good. The contact...
Just on that, is it possible to have access via cellphone?
We will.
So, but for your purposes?
Oh.
Could you then, if you get the alert on your phone, you could just tap the button?
I'll ask them and if that's the case, then I might not need one. But if I'm in my office after school in a meeting and nobody's in the main office, if I had the monitor, I could see who, as soon as the bell rings, I could see who it is and I can remotely allow them to come in. Say it's a PTO member, they're setting up for the bake sale. Instead of having, and I mean, not that I'm lazy, but instead of having to tell my meeting people, I'll be right back, I have to go answer the door and go into the office and see who it is, you know? So that would be good. But if, if it's something that I can see on my phone, I think that would be great. I'm not sure, I don't know about that. But as for the phones, we will have access, certain people will have access to be able to alarm, disarm, set things. We'll have a separate alarm code setting for the gym area for the weekends if we're only using the gym. But the cafeteria will be part of the whole alarm system for the school, so...
The, the badge cards or the key cards that currently are issued to staff, are those individually tracked, meaning 1, 2, 3 is assigned to Mr. Smith at 1, 2, 4?
Yes.
So, I, would you follow a similar process so you could identify who armed the building or who disarmed the building remotely by...
We'll be able to tell, yeah.
Right, okay. And do we currently have or are we looking to get remote access to the cameras?
We have, well, right now, the alarm company does have remote access to the cameras.
Yep.
I think that the people that have the app on their phone will have remote access to the cameras.
So...
Not, not...
Is this going back to the police station?
Ultimately, yes.
So say the alarm goes off and it's 11 o'clock at night.
Yep.
Nobody's in the building.
Yep.
I'm home, the custodian's home.
Yep.
The police respond.
Yep.
And say there's nobody in the building and I can also see that there was nobody or whatever.
Yep.
I can reset the alarm from my phone, but I can also see that the building is clear.
I get, I get that piece because it's probably similar to Alarm.com. Right? So I have the same feature, I might, so like if one of our buildings, the alarm goes off, you know, I can enter, go into the alarm system and I can see how long it's been since each sensor has been triggered. Right? So often I get it at 9:30 at night if the alarm hasn't been turned on, I get an alert and it's just the custodian left at 7 o'clock and has now been gone for two and a half hours. So then I just turn the building on, right? But there's a separate app outside of that that I can log into, only certain people have access, that you can then pull up all the cameras.
Okay.
And see that. So do you have the...
I don't know.
See if we have the ability to do that.
Okay.
Because A, I think you as the building principal should have that. And secondly, I still think one of the intents of the original security upgrade was that under the, in the event of an emergency, that dispatch has the ability to turn on the cameras.
I believe, right, what I was told was they won't be monitored all day, all day, all day, whatever, but they will have access to it, but I will verify that.
Because you think about it, middle of the night, 1 o'clock in the morning, the alarms are going off, you know, and there's a car coming, and this is Southampton, there's only going to be two cars on after hours and they split up the town separately and Norris is in the middle. So there's almost never going to be a car close by. If dispatch can look and if they can say, yeah, they're, hey, there's somebody, somebody just bolted out the back door, that would work. Because we're never going to have anything worse than that. But, but, sorry, the last point on that is I think there should be, school committee sets policy, right? And administration enforces it.
Absolutely.
But I think we should have a discussion at some point, probably through executive session, on security protocols, who, school committee should know and vote to say who has the ability to have those access rights. And/or delegate because, you know, I, I don't see the need for every single employee at Norris to have the full access.
Correct.
I do, I do see key people and possibly there's additional authorizations or commitment letters that are assigned, understanding that you're taking on this additional responsibility. So, go ahead, I cut you off enough now.
No, I was just curious. So when you only have access to look at the cameras like on your app if the alarm goes off? Or you can pull them up at any time, like right now, you could look and say, oh, yep, no one's in there?
I think I would be able to pull them up on my computer at any time. I don't really want to have it on my personal phone.
Well, no, I'm just saying, in general.
Yeah.
I didn't know if it was like the way you were asking, I didn't know if it was...
That was the, that was the agreement, the verbal exchange we had with the police chief, that only the police chief would have the code and only, he would have to enter his and only, he would have to enter his code or give his code and it would only happen under certain circumstances.
Okay.
Because there was, pushback's the wrong word. There was hesitation at some point that the police would just constantly be watching the schools. So, our, our chief said...
What's the hesitation? What would be the hesitation if the police constantly have...
I think privacy concerns, I think.
Yeah, children, I mean, you know, it...
Okay, never mind.
Right. It's meant for an emergency purpose. And, and, you know, Chief Ellingsworth said that that would, you know, he was fine with having those restrictions where it had to be a supervisor and they'd log it. And if they had their own code, we could run monthly reports if need be. Say, okay, well, we didn't have any calls for service at school, but it looks like you accessed the system 17 times. And here's when it happened.
And, and really, there's no expectation of privacy in those common areas in the schools, especially after hours, when no one's supposed to be in there. So, I, I, I understand why people would have hesitation. I understand having a policy that articulates who are those that are it makes perfect sense to me.
And the, the blue lights are up and running now?
The blue lights are up. They are working if I hit them. The question is, are they working? Will they go to the police department? That is still a question that they could not answer for me today.
Okay. And if you have it, none, because I don't think I've seen it. But when they are up and running, we should send out some sort of communication, similar to what Lauren does.
I will, yeah. And actually, I did notice in the minutes after you voted on them, last month's minutes said that the parents had been notified. They have not been, they will be notified, so we should probably fix that.
So, we'll amend our minutes?
We should, yes.
We're going back to our vote on the minutes?
Sorry.
We're going to amend them. Instead of saying that parents have been notified, they will be notified shortly.
It's under security upgrade. The lockdown lights have been tested and parents have been informed. Parents will be...
Will be informed.
I won't, I won't be informing them until I know exactly...
Right, and that's what you said.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Anything else?
I have something. May I have something, may I have a question?
Sure. We're pretty informal.
No, okay, good.
It's not.
Respectful. One thing I wanted to mention is that the procurement laws still, of course, aren't enforced for schools. There's different thresholds. But there's been some confusion about prevailing wage. And prevailing wage has no thresholds from, so from dollar one, you need to be paying prevailing wage when any work is done in a municipal building, a school, et cetera. So, we just want to make sure that that's happening.
Okay.
And, so, it should be written on the quote when you're asking for service, right?